Do we know what hotel chain yet is coming in now, eight six?
Thought you only know one on this stuff.
None on that.
Nice touch up.
If it deals with.
Does Akron play you the old issue?
We'll get started about one minute.
Well, if you have MAC officials, you'll be in trouble.
September twelfth, two thousand sixteen meeting of the City of Danville Planning Commission is now called to order. Welcome everybody here to this meeting. The Planning Commission is an advisory board to the Danville City Council and is comprised of members who serve on a voluntary basis. Today we have two items to consider for which there will be a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the case may do so at that time. After the public hearing, commissioning members may have questions for staff or for those who have spoken for or against the request to change. The Planning Commission will review the case relative to the city code and make a recommendation to forward to city council. Council will consider these items if they're October sixth meeting. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Dotson?
Present.
Mr. Garrison?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Okay, first item on the agenda is a special use permit application, PLSUP twenty sixteen zero 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 two three six, filed by Abdullah Nesmith requesting a special use permit to operate a car wash in accordance with Article three K, Section C, Item twenty eight of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, nineteen eighty-six as amended at two thirty-four North Union Street. The applicant is proposing to operate a hand car wash and detailing service. We could have a staff report, please.
The applicant, Abdullah Nesmith, is requesting a special use permit to operate an outdoor car wash at two thirty-four North Union Street and the adjacent parking area. The primary structure on the law is the retail store denim stacks. The outdoor car wash would operate concurrently in the shop's parking area. The subject parcels are zoned central business commercial and sit upon a combined point one three acres. All properties abutting the subject property are also zoned central business commercial. The subject properties are subdivided by a driveway leading to a rear parking lot. The driveway and the parking area behind the buildings are owned by the City of Danville. The subject properties lie within the Historic River District. On September eighth, twenty sixteen, the River District Commission reviewed the case to make a decision on whether an outdoor car wash was an appropriate business in the River District. The Commission voted five one to deny a recommendation of approval to the City Planning Commission in regards to this case. The River District Commission reasoned that it would be visually unpleasing for the downtown area and that they could have supported it if it were indoors. Twelve notices were sent to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property and a complete report is in front of you. Staff is concerned with wastewater disposal at this site. Open air drains are not permitted and the slope of the land would lead any wastewater to ultimately run off into the Dan River if not appropriately disposed of. Staff recommends approval of special use permit application, PLSUP twenty sixteen zero 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 two three six filed by Abdullah Nesmith to allow for an outdoor car wash in accordance with Article three K, Section C, Item twenty eight of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, as amended at two thirty-four North Union Street and adjacent parking area. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. One, a professional grade water containment mat is used for each car wash or detailing job. Two, wastewater from the water containment mat is collected through a wet/dry vacuum system so that it can be properly disposed of. Three, the hours of operation shall be no more than seven AM to seven PM. And four, no detailing shall occur in the city-owned parking lot adjacent to the site.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing now. If someone wishes to speak on this item, please come forth. Give us your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Abdullah Nesmith. I'm the owner of Denim Stacks. I've been self-employed in Danville for twenty-two years. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for the applicant from the commissioners at this time?
What's your reaction to the fact that the River District basically said, no, not a good idea?
I mean, I'm looking at the situation. Pretty much it's cars parked in those parking lots anyway, so I think they were more so talking about people hanging out. I can only wash two cars at a time, so I will have a sitting area and I actually will have a sitting area inside too, so they can sit outside or inside. So that can only go, that would only be two people at a time, so I don't think that would be too much of an hassle.
Yes.
There are cars parked in that lot continuously. I mean, every time I go by, there's five or six cars parked in that lot. Where do those cars come from? I mean, you're going to wash cars in that lot, but there are always cars on that lot.
Um, the cars is pretty much going to the barber shops. So those are a lot of employees from the barber shop parked there. I mean, but that's our parking lot, so I will instruct them they need to park in the city parking lot in the back.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. Huh, go ahead.
Would you follow the city's guidelines that they are proposing? The wastewater containment for each car wash and detailing job? The hours of operation? Are you willing to follow the four?
Yes.
One person mentioned a a request to repave the lot. Was that part of the, did I miss that? Was that part of your requirements or is that an expectation?
That probably was.
It was not one of the requirements, but is that something you would plan on doing?
No, because I mean, one part of the pavement is a little cracked, but that's actually the city problem. I mean, I'm pretty much, once I get started, I probably would put more gravel in the parking lot across from where I'd be washing the cars at.
All right.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wish to come and speak on this item? Anyone else? Okay, close the public hearing. I had a question for staff too about what about parking requirements for the businesses that are there now? Would that still keep them, or they, does that go knock them out of compliance or anything?
The central business district does not require off-street parking, so there's no requirement unless they're over so many square feet and the building's not even close to that minimum. So it won't affect that.
Okay.
I have a question of staff. It seems like the car wash that was on North Ridge, I believe, city was adamant that it be enclosed, but yet you're recommending approval of this that is going to be in the open. Could you please explain why?
Okay, we recommended approval before we received the River District, basically their recommendation for denial. So at this point, staff is just, we're going to leave this up to the Planning Commission on making a recommendation of it. When we looked at it, he has offered to place a mat. The reason the one, it's actually on North, it wasn't North Ridge Street, it was on one of the other streets up in there, I'm sorry which one. But it was because of the controlling of stormwater, the wash water and everything else because of new state stormwater management regulations. He's proposed a system that actually captures all the water that comes off the car that can be pumped into the city sanitary system. So no water should be coming off of his site that gets into storm drains and can cause potential for pollution. So when we looked at it first, that's one of the reasons we recommended approval. We were unaware that the River District was going to say, no, they didn't like the idea of an outdoor car wash. They're not opposed to an indoor car wash, but they don't believe there should be an outdoor car wash. So staff's recommendation is you guys make the call.
And I think their denial basically more was the aesthetic.
The aesthetics of it, correct.
Of it more than anything else.
I guess, I guess just a comment. I certainly don't in any way want to fault Mr. Nesmith for wanting to expand his business and do things like that. But I do think that we were very active in helping formulate and create the River District plan and go through all the details of that. And my recollection of all of that is that, you know, we set this up in such a way, the city set it up, council voted on it, set it up in such a way that when it went to that commission, that commission would be able to weigh in on these kinds of decisions about kind of the aesthetics of how we're going to do our downtown. So, you know, I think we're really, we think about that a lot.
Sure.
So.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll have a motion.
I'll recommend, I mean, I know where it's going to go. I recommend denial of special use permit application, PLSUP twenty sixteen zero 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 two three six.
Got a second? Have a roll call, please.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a rezoning application, PLRZ twenty sixteen zero 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 two three seven, filed by the Board of Missions of the United Methodist Church requesting to rezone from OTR, Old Town Residential, to conditional TOC, Transitional Office Commercial at two one two Murphy Circle. The applicant is proposing to rezone the parcel so that the building may be used for community services operated by nonprofit organizations. We could have a staff report, please.
A request has been filed by the Danville District Board of Missions of the United Methodist Church to rezone two one two Murphy Circle from Old Town Residential to conditional transitional office commercial. The applicant is proposing to operate nonprofit-run community services from the building. The subject property is bordered on all sides by properties zoned to Old Town Residential. The two point eight nine acre subject parcel has ingress and egress from Murphy Circle. The subject parcel has historically operated at Stokesland United Methodist Church. The site is now referred to as the Stokesland Site of Mosley Memorial United Methodist Church. Sunday morning, church services are planned to continue on-site following the rezoning and after nonprofit organizations begin operating from the subject parcel. The applicant has proffered a list of prohibited uses to bring the property closer to the existing uses allowed within the Old Town Residential District. The proffered conditions would still allow accessory buildings, catering services, churches and places of worship, offices, daycare facilities, private schools, art studios, and child therapeutic support services. The applicant has proffered that any use or business operating on the subject property must conform to a not-for-profit status. Forty-nine notices were sent to surrounding property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property and a complete report is in front of you. This request could be considered spot zoning. However, not all spot zoning is illegal. Spot zoning is illegal when zoning ordinance is designed solely to serve the private interests of one or more landowners, but if the legislative purpose is to further the welfare of the entire city as part of an overall zoning plan, the ordinance does not constitute illegal spot zoning. Based on the conditions proffered by the applicant, staff believes that the proposed rezoning would not be detrimental to surrounding property owners. The not-for-profit nature of the proposed community services will minimize private interests being served while furthering the welfare of the greater Danville area, including surrounding property owners. Staff recommends approval of rezoning application, PLRZ twenty sixteen zero 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 two three seven, filed by the Board of Missions of the United Methodist Church requesting to rezone from Old Town Residential to conditional transitional office commercial. Two one two Murphy Circle, otherwise known as Grid zero six one three, Block zero zero four, Parcel zero 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 one five one of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Open the public hearing. Someone would like to come forward and speak on this item?
Good afternoon. I'm Janine Howard. I am the president of the Board of Missions for the United Methodist Church for the Danville District, which encompasses this area, Pennsylvania, Franklin, Patrick. I'm also the district superintendent for the United Methodist Church in this area. So that just describes for you what my role is in this. We have the pastor of the former Stokesland Church with us as well. She can maybe speak to any really specific questions you have. But as the president of the Board of Missions, I just want to assure you that what we're seeking to do is to serve the needs, especially of the Stokesland community, the immediate community. I'm not going to read all of these for you. These are some demographical instruments that we have access to. Couple of things really stand out, the level of poverty in that community. We drew a circle of one mile around the property. The poverty level there is significantly higher than even the state averages in that neighborhood. Also, a very high level of single-family parents and it looks like the projection is lots of single-parent households with dads. So we see some particular services that we might be able to provide in terms of the particular situations and needs of that community and we do appreciate your hearing us today so that we can do what we need to do in order to conform to Danville zoning in order to carry this out.
I have one question. Is this is a, basically an outreach of the church that's doing this? You're not leasing it to another nonprofit?
We, what we'll need to do is to be in partnership with other organizations in order to continue to use the building. It's a fairly large building, big piece of land. So from an economic standpoint, we need to be able to at least defray the expenses of things like utilities. So that would involve lease situations. But it's not to make money, it's just to enable us to keep the building. It's, there's no money owed on it, but we need to keep it insured. There's maintenance, we need to keep it as a safe place for people to come to. But not for the purpose of making money. The Danville District Board of Missions is a 501(c)(3), so that's not what we're trying to do here. We're just trying to make it a viable, sustainable, long-term answer to the needs of the community.
So basically, can you give us an example of a mission or two that will be paying to be a part of that facility?
Well, we actually have somebody from one of those agencies here or agency or not-for-profit. I'll let him, we'll have him speak in a moment. He can speak to that. We've talked to a number of groups. The sort of presenting issue for this was an agency, Patrick Henry Services, which provides counseling for families who are taking care of foster children. Something that they'd identified that Danville needs as a service and in the process of trying to bring them into the building, we discovered we could not bring them in unless we went through the rezoning because we were going to have to have them come in and pay a little something for rent, you know, for the utilities essentially. And we discovered we could not do that legally, so that's why we're here.
Yeah, well, right, it's not important to me to, I just want to guess I have, need to have, it's not important for me to hear like from each group, but it is, I guess I'm just curious about what kind of services are going to be utilizing the facility.
And some of them may be partner agencies or not-for-profits and some of them may be things that we do internally. You'll notice that we left artist studios on there. We know from experience that having an open studio for community members just to come in and use for free to do painting or sculpture, ceramics, things like that, is really important for the well-being of the folks in the community. So that would not be a partnering, but that's something we would do. We'll probably kind of launch the place with putting in a community garden and then helping people understand how they can garden for themselves, for their own purposes, for healthier eating, you know, and to save money. So those kinds of things, does that help in terms of your question? Okay.
And you will continue to have church services, correct?
Yes, the, without getting too deep into the polity of the United Methodist Church, the members of that church have actually placed their membership with Mosley Memorial because we discontinued that property as a congregation as of July first of this year.
Which, which community?
Stokesland.
So the Stokesland congregation really has been absorbed by the Mosley Memorial?
Yes, but we are permitting them to worship there as a satellite congregation. I know it's confusing, but it's church polity and governance that's difficult.
Yeah, I know a little bit about.
Reverend Norden can speak to that if you would like, but they have continued to meet there for worship and we want to be able to provide that to them for as long as we can.
Okay.
That sounds like.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll have, yes.
So anybody else wish to speak on this can come forward? Only if you want to, you don't have to.
Only if you want to, you really don't need to.
I guess it's just to address the one question which.
Can you state your name for the record?
My apologies. Reverend Lisa Norden.
Thank you.
Pastor of Mosley Memorial United Methodist Church and Stokesland Site. To address the question, on the ground, it is still an active community at Stokesland and they actually want to be a part of the, of whatever nonprofits come in to be in connection and build relationships. And there will be many different types of nonprofit. In my world of thinking, it's almost a casting a vision. It's going to be, for lack of a better term, a non, a non, one-stop profit, nonprofit mission center where if somebody comes in and they're challenged with perhaps not having enough money to purchase clothes, for school clothes for their kids, we can give them that and then send them next door if they need some kind of peer-to-peer resource to help learn how to finance better. And if they need an education, we can maybe help them on a computer to do resumes or stuff. It is my hope one day that it will be one space where people can go and get a number of different places where they can get help, where they are empowered, not simply given a handout, but. Mike, would you want to speak or not?
Yeah, step up to the mic, give us your name too, so we have.
My name's Michael Ellison. I'm the founder and director of the Recovery Refuge Peer Support Center. We are an official 501(c)(3) that right now operates kind of in satellite locations. I want to address Mr. Wilson's questions about free services. Last month, we trained fifteen different people free of charge, providing them lunch and applied suicide intervention skills training. At any given time, we will contact one point three people, each of us individually, if somebody that is having suicidal idylations and we just thank as many people in our community that can be given the skills on how to keep somebody safe as vital. We will have that same class again free of charge. We have fifteen people registered now, this Thursday and Friday, at that same two twelve Murphy Circle. On the twenty-second, I have thirty people registered, fifteen people on a waiting list for a program called Safe Talk, which is a prevention to suicide on how do you identify the signs and actually initiate a conversation with somebody. Where the assist is an intervention, Safe Talk is a prevention. We also run a program called RAP, Wellness Recovery Action Plan, again free to the community. It started twenty-some years ago in Vermont for people that had mental illness. The Substance Abuse Mental Health Service Authority of the federal government deemed it an evidence-based practice, gave the Copeland Center eight point six million dollars to push that throughout the states. We run a RAP for re-entry over in the Pennsylvania County Jail. We just finished our first one last week. We will start our next one next week. The first year it was implemented in California cut the recidivism rate forty percent and sixty percent of those that were released found work within the first four months of being released. Those numbers can be here once we have a solid foundation where we can start to write for grants to be able to make that happen. All of our services are free to anybody that identifies or anybody that wants to be a care provider for those. Or I had a gentleman call me this morning, I was in Roanoke, so you have to forgive my attire, I was in Roanoke at a training for the Department of Behavioral Health talking about the opioid addiction throughout our country. And I got a phone call from a gentleman that is retired, whose grandson had attempted suicide at some point last year and over the last few months. the last few months, his behaviors has become to a place where he's kind of withdrawing, and as soon as I leave here, I'm sending him a registration so that he can come to the class Thursday and Friday, free of charge, so that he can have the skills to keep his son safe, know what to look for, and know who to call, and be given the community resources, hopefully to bring that boy to, you know, a different place in his life. But I'm willing to answer whatever questions.
Okay, I think that's fine. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
This is going to be a hard act to follow. I should have gone before it. Rhonda McCubbin, Spohler, and I'm old and memory's bad, so you'll have to forgive me for looking at my notes. I'm here to speak in favor of approving the Stokesland request. Local missions and ministries have long been a passion of mine, and as Bruce can tell you from my West Main Baptist days with starting the fellowship breakfast and working with many other area. Oh, I thought I was loud enough. Usually I'm too loud. But working with many other local and area ministries, outreach projects, I've had a lot of experience working with these type of agencies, and I'm very excited to hear this plan that Stokesland has proposed, and I'm looking forward to being involved in helping them with it. And I feel that having a central location, as Lisa was talking about, that offers numerous types of help will be able to greatly increase the number of people served, but also help them more completely. And I think it's important to look at the bigger picture here too, that yes, we will be helping individuals, but we will also be impacting every person that those individuals interact with. And as not only just someone who would like to help with this, as a member of the greater Stokesland community myself right now, I'm not just wanting to welcome this to our city, but I'm wanting to welcome it to my own neighborhood community. So, and thank you. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, close the public hearing. I have one question for staff. It seems like so much of what they're talking about doing would, could fall under the umbrella of any particular church's standard ministry. Is the reason we're having to go through this is because they're partnering with somebody else and bringing them in?
They're partnering with someone else, bringing them in, they have the potential to actually charge rent and other, so while it'll truly be a nonprofit if income or anything else is coming in, and as she said, the congregation's actually stopped, but they're still using the facility, so the church, while it's in there, they're not really in there. We felt that this was the cleanest way to make sure that there was no questions on the operation of the facility.
Okay.
If they want to start a community garden, will they have to come back to us for that? Or was, does this include the ability to do that?
If it's going to be the urban agriculture, under that definition, they would come back.
If they just want to plant tomato, plant a two, they wouldn't go to them.
It all depends on how the operation is. That was kind of new to me at this meeting, so I didn't, we didn't bring that up before, so I'll talk to them after the meeting about that.
So that's not something that they, we could add to this?
Has to be advertised if it's under that portion.
Okay. Any questions, comments, a motion? Yes, sir.
I recommend approval of rezoning application, PLRZ 2016-0000-237. That's admitted.
Okay, second by Mr. Garrison. And roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Dotson?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the August 8 meeting. Any corrections or changes?
There's a correction, but I already talked to Teresa about it. I'm sure I did not make the motion and second the motion.
Okay.
You were very efficient that day.
And I honestly don't remember which I did. I know I did one.
Okay. That being corrected, a motion, they all be approved.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Do I need to say all in favor?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Other business?
The standard city council approved everything that you had recommended at the last meeting. We do have cases for next month, so please be here. This is more for the television audience at home. The planning office is going to be closed this Friday. The staff is going to a training seminar in Lynchburg, so the first time in the 20-some years that I've been here that the entire office will be closed. It'll only be closed on Friday, so if there's anything you need, zoning clearances, business licenses, construction clearances come down Thursday. Otherwise, we won't be able to issue anything this coming Friday. That's all.
Anything from commissioners? Okay, meeting adjourned.